Calling the September 11th, 2024 public meeting to order. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
In the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have all of our supervisors, John Callahan, Dan Eljwan, Bob Cooney, myself, Mark Donovan, Martha Majewski. We have our township manager, Lori Getz, our assistant manager, Valentina Mitter over there taking some notes, Bill Brennan, our attorney, and Paul Bettin, our engineer. We had executive sessions that I have to announce from September 9th and today's September 11th regarding personnel, property acquisition, and litigation. Right on to the consent agenda. Let's go with, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' August 14th, 2024 business meeting, including all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of August 31st, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right on to the Treasurers' report and payment of bills. Consideration of acceptance of Treasurer's report for period ending August 31st, 2024. I'll make a motion to accept the report. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So for the Treasurer's report, we had a, for period ending August 30th, 2024, we have a general fund balance of just over 6.5, just slightly under $6.6 million, up slightly over last month. As of that time period, we have realized 91% of our revenues, and we've reached just about slightly over 50% of our expenditures. So we're in really good shape for this, this time of the year. I'll just point out that we had an accounting glitch in our Treasurer's report, in the software that populates a Treasurer's report. So next month, you'll see amended Treasurer's reports just for one line item in it for the last two months that we've corrected. The balances today are correct. It was just a reporting error, not an actual error in the funds, if that makes sense. Just the way that it pulled the data over. And that's been resolved after much work this week by our accountant. So.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion. We approve disbursement stated September 11th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
All of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Thanks. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No old business, so right on to new business. I'll pass this right on to Lori to discuss.
Yes. So first on the agenda tonight is, the Board of Supervisors is announcing its intent to acquire and preserve land in the township for the purposes of reserving it for open space. The parcel number is listed on the agenda. It's 27647. The address is 930 Valley Forge Road. So we have a series of items related to that matter this evening. As part of that acquisition, there will be financing. So we're going to have a presentation by the township's financial advisor who we acquired, who we hired last month. So I will turn it right over to Jamie.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Schlesinger. I work for a firm called PFM Financial Advisors. We are a somewhat unique financial advisor. When most people think about financial advisors, they're thinking someone that helps them, you know, invest stocks and bonds for individual purposes. My role is simply to work with local governments to assist with these exact type of situations. Our firm spends most of its time in Pennsylvania, working with hundreds of local governments and school districts, counties, to help them facilitate and plan for execution of debt issuance. In some cases, it's a combination of using, you know, public municipal bonds, bank loans, you know, local funds, or grants, or other items. Our job essentially is to serve as your fiduciary, to ultimately get you to a position that makes economic sense for both you as a payer of the debt and the taxpayers that cover the debt service. So in this particular situation, we've been asked to review the financials of the township, come up with some ideas to potentially consider an acquisition of this property. So for tonight, I'll describe the process by which the township would have to go through, should it want to do a public debt issuance, and the process by which it takes to get from one point A to point B to ultimately point Z, which takes some time, but we're very good at what we do, and we're happy to shepherd you through this process. So you'll see me at this meeting and some future meetings over the next few weeks to allow us to get to a point to have funding available, hopefully by the end of November, early December. That's the anticipation hope. Just running through some ideas and kind of where we are right now. I'm going to ask you to turn to page three. I'll skip over page two in a second, and go back to that, because I think it's important for the public and supervisors to hear how things work. So first off, as all of you know, the township had a referendum several years ago, probably several decades ago, associated with allowing for an earned income tax to be assessed to the taxpayers that has been generating funds for a number of years. That fund itself is, of course, based on the income of the residents and currently generates approximately $1.3 million annually. The township currently has a balance of $13 million in that fund, and because of the referendum, the way it works is, you can utilize those annual revenues to do multiple things. One, acquire property. Two, fund open space through debt service, i.e. payment of principal and interest, or a combination of both. So for tonight, we're going to talk about a strategy that we think makes sense for both the economic opportunity for future acquisition, should the township choose, and also the affordability of payment of debt service. So we will leverage your payments over the coming years and hopefully make it economical at the best cost for the township. As I mentioned earlier, that revenue itself is a significant amount of money, and given that size, you can, you can actually borrow a good chunk of change, it's a technical term, to cover this acquisition of property. As the township goes through the process to finalize the ultimate determination of the final cost, we're going to make some recommendation on how much we ask you to consider borrowing, and we'll talk about that in the next couple of minutes. The township has to follow several rules. It's not as simple as you and I just calling the local bank and saying, you know, give me $5 million, and two weeks later, you're signing some papers. It doesn't work that way in Pennsylvania. In this case, you have to follow the rules of the Local Government Unit Debt Act, which is followed and associate done by the DCD. DCD, Department of Community Economic Development, and the Local Government Unit Debt Act is the book that essentially tells you how you need to do it and the way it's done. And there's processes that you have to follow. The first and most important is, you need to have enough borrowing capacity. How much money you allow to borrow as a local government. And that is through a borrowing-based calculation that will help you work through to determine your ability to get funding. It's essentially based on the total revenues that the township receives annually over a three-year average, and multiply that by 250%. So given the township of this size and this nature, you have a pretty strong amount of borrowing capacity. So the ability to borrow money for point number one is, you can do it. You have to afford it, of course. Usually, the amount that you can borrow is usually a little bit more than you, that we normally suggest our clients borrowing, but want to point that out. That's one of the statutory requirements. It's essentially, it's not the perfect math, but it's three-year historic average of the total revenues of the township. So if you're, easy numbers, if you generate $10 million a year of total revenues, and it's an average, average amount, 250% of that, so it's $25 million is the total. So if by chance that was your number, and the township had $10 million of non-electoral debt outstanding, that means your balance would be $15 million available to borrow. And over the course of time, as you pay down principal, that amount would increase, and as your revenues may increase, that also would increase. So each time you consider doing any debt issuance, that calculation needs to be done. It's entire township revenues, yes. Yeah, there are certain exclusions, exceptions that you would, we do in the math problems, but generally speaking, that's the way the calculation works. And you'll see that, should we move forward with the transaction, the borrowing base and debt statement that are created will be part of the package. Okay? So, couple other things. We have to follow both those state laws that I just started describing, and then you have to follow federal tax laws. The federal tax laws are quite important, of course, because townships of your nature are allowed to borrow tax-exempt when you're borrowing with this type of solution. We're looking for something that is for government use, so that allows you to borrow as a tax exempt. So open space is a, is something that is allowed under the state guidelines, and also it's federally allowed to be a tax-exempt acquisition. What does that mean by being tax-exempt? Well, the concept is simple enough. Any person that purchases your debt, investors, essentially gets a credit of the interest that they receive if they live in Pennsylvania, both on the federal and, and state side. So from that, from that reason, you get a better interest rate, because they are getting a credit for their purposes. So if anyone's own municipal bonds, it's the same concept here. You purchase them for a reason, because you get that tax credit tied to this, so that interest is, is deductible. That's a pretty significant reduction in the amount of interest rate that you would pay. So as an example, you know, if you think of a 30-year home mortgage, and I'm not quoting exactly, I'm not in the business, but let's say it's 7%. For someone like you, that may be 4%. So it's a pretty significant reduction. Part of that's driven by that, that tax exemption, but it's also because there's a, a significant value for investors that are looking for people like you that can pay your debt service, because it's a, a strong credit. Potentially, depending on your creditworthiness, you could have a better credit rating than the US government. We'll find out pretty soon if that happens. But it, it's an interesting dynamic that we have. Most importantly, because of that federal tax requirement, you have to meet other certain tests, and that includes reasonable expectations to spend the money within three years. Well, usually, open space, it's usually pretty easy, because you're intending to purchase some open space, which will happen reasonably soon, so that spend will happen pretty quickly. But, I know there's a gentleman in the audience from Euclid Township, and I worked with them about six months ago for an acquisition of open space. And in their case, they purchased a property, but they also wanted to put some maintenance to that property, and that's going to take some time. So the acquisition was, you know, five or so million dollars, and they borrowed a couple million dollars, which they'll spend over the next couple of years. And because of that, they're able to finance that all at once. Questions on that concept? Okay. One last thing, and I will point out, because this will be on your agenda for later. One of the considerations here is, we're going to ask you to consider approving what is called a reimbursement resolution. And this is a, a tax document that gives the township flexibility to utilize its own funds in advance of any payment from the, the use of bond proceeds. So the idea is simple enough, in if the township needs to spend money on design, construction, acquisition, deposits, whatever is associated with the acquisition of the property, but we're not ready to settle on the transaction in time. Rather than having to wait, you're able to use your own funds, and should you choose to reimburse your general fund or open space fund with the proceeds of the debt issuance in advance of that settlement, you can do that, and it allows you to do that tax-exempt. It's a flexibility opportunity for the township, and we traditionally suggest our clients that are kind of going down this road to do something like that. It is your option. It may or may not happen, but we suggest you do it, and that is on the agenda for tonight. Questions? Okay. All right. So when you turn to the next page, which is page four, I'm not going to touch interest rates just yet, because you'll, you'll see it on the next page. So what we did here was, we tried to provide simple concepts of what payment would look like. The good news about open space acquisition is, it's dirt. It's things that are being ground. They're going to be here for a long time. So the ability to acquire something like open space means you can amortize the debt for a long period of time. Traditionally in Pennsylvania, and we're talking about municipal bonds, and there's lots of options here, but bonds will be the best option, hence what I'm here for. You can do that over a 30-year period, traditionally at max. I'm actually selling bonds tomorrow for Chester County on a refinancing, and that's a $10 million issuance, because that was a refinancing in debt. So each maturity can be different amounts, depending on the original purpose. But in this case, our suggestion here is thinking between 20 and 30 years, and I'll give you my recommendation, which alternative I think makes sense. So looking at that page, this is a simple summary that shows what the principal and interest estimate will be annually, if you choose to move forward with a transaction. As I mentioned earlier, the township has $13 million in its open space fund, and there is potential for future opportunity for open space. Given that there is a revenue coming in that will be used to either build, continue to build the open space fund, as well as the ability to pay debt service, the two things we want to weigh here is giving flexibility for the township to either acquire new properties if necessary, or it can choose to use those funds to pay down additional principal. That is an option for you, and I'll, I'll touch on that in a little bit. So the alternatives here are a $10 million issuance. Given the potential estimated purchase price of the property, we believe that between the funds that are sitting in the open space fund, the funds that will be coming in, and this borrowing, we believe $10 million is the right number to go with. There's two reasons for that, besides the one I talked about for cash flow purposes and affordability. But second is, when a township like you issues debt tax-exempt, there's also a special exemption for you called bank qualification, and that is an additional benefit of being a township of your, of your nature, that says, if you issue $10 million or less in the calendar year, you get an additional credit on the tax exemption portion and the benefits of the investors, and that traditionally provides you an additional 0.15 to 0.2% reduction in interest rate over the course of time, one. And two, it also allows the township to utilize a call provision that is shorter. So, giving an idea of how that would work for you, if we had a mortgage, your loan is prepayable anytime without penalty, that doesn't necessarily work with bonds. With municipal bonds, the investors need to have a provision on their side, and in Pennsylvania, if you have a bank-qualified issue, that can be something like five years. If you had a $12 million issue or a $15 million issue, it may be between, be, be between eight and 10 years. So the flexibility of the ability to pay down principal at a quicker time at your alternative makes more sense to do it as a bank-qualified issue. So that's why, that's the magic number that I suggest using in this case, is $10 million. I'll stop if anyone has any questions on that. Okay. So let's talk about the numbers itself. Should the township move forward, and I would point out, it won't be exactly $10 million. It could be somewhere around this, and there's a little bit of bond math that goes to it. So once we finally, if should we move forward with a bond transaction, it'll look something like this, but I, we're using $10 million as the number. If you assume that you borrow on the orange column, $10 million over a 20-year period, the annual debt service, meaning the principal and interest starting in 2025, would be about $715,000 to almost $720,000. The estimated interest rate on a 20-year issuance is about 3.83%, okay? And if you look at the total interest expense on the top column, right on that box, that's about $5 million. Should you choose the 25-year alternative, not surprising, if you borrow for a longer period of time, your payment is lower. You pay a little bit more in interest, of course. That payment would reduce to $661,000, and the total interest expense would be about $5.8 million. The interesting dynamic is, when you go to a 30-year amortization, even though there's a, of course, a reduction in payment, you'll notice the bang for your buck, you pay a lot more interest for only a short amount of period of time, you lose that, and that's really just a function of bond math, which none of you want to learn about tonight. So that number is approximately $580,000 a year annually, but again, the total interest expense would be about $7.4 million. So that's why my suggestion here is, look into the middle column as the 25-year amortization, because one, the useful life of the, of the acquisition of the property is longer than, could be up to 30 years. Two, it provides you some cash flow flexibility to cover the debt service. So because you're receiving $1.3 million a year, give or take, in annual revenues, about half of it can be covered with the debt service, and allow you to continue to build that balance. And three, should other funds come in, so, you know, grants, other funding through sales of other things, you can take your funds and pay down principal. So as I mentioned earlier, with that call provision, I'm giving an example here. Let's say we borrowed $10 million, and let's say, two years from now, the township decided it made economic sense or had funds available of $2 million. The township could let us know, and we would go through the process to do something called a defeasance. It's a fancy firm for paying down debt. And that concept is simply putting the money into an escrow until the call provision, which would be approximately 2029. That money can be invested in US Treasury-type securities, and that would reduce your debt service and reduce the principal balance. Again, more conversation for a future day, but if I'm sitting in your shoes, I'd ask that question myself. So that's the benefit of doing this type of transaction. I'll stop if anyone has any questions on this page. Okay. Turning to the next page is our timeline. I mentioned earlier, there's a format and a process that local governments need to go through to enter into any, this is called non-electoral debt. So even though there was an, a referendum that was tied to the EIT, the debt issuance would be non-electoral, because the township supervisors are going to be asked to authorize and ultimately approve an ordinance to execute the bond transaction. Could you do electoral debt at some point in future for something else? Sure, that happens. You have enough borrowing capacity and, and the right to do this. So non-electoral debt is mostly used for most transactions that local governments do, but there are other options. So in this particular case, the process by which we go through this process is really multiple steps. One, we have to follow those guidelines. There has to be proper advertising in the, in the local paper. I should point out, the Local Government Unit Debt Act supersedes Township Code. So traditional ordinances for Township Code need to be, I believe it's 30 days in the law library, or wherever they go these days. In this case, it's three days in advance of, of a, of a board meeting. So there would be a special counsel, a bond counsel, that will help the township out, preparing for and ultimately executing the legal authorizations, and preparing the parameters ordinance, which is a second document that we, we'd ask you to consider. Tonight's the reimbursement resolution, but if we're going to approve any debt issuance, we will ask you to consider a parameters ordinance. And the concept of parameters is just a fancy term to say, we won't have the bond issue completed until after the township approves the debt. But, so we would potentially price bonds, you know, maybe sometime around Halloween, if all goes well. The parameters would be established based on several things, most of which are just maximums. And we have to do maximums because of movement in the market, both on interest rates and our ability as your fiduciary to structure the debt in a capacity that makes sense and also makes it fit within the state guidelines. So, should we move forward with a $10 million-ish borrowing, you probably will see a parameters ordinance at $12 million. Understand that what we will come back with is exactly what you're asking for, which would be approximately $10 million. It just looks kind of funny. So that is a flexibility for us to do that work when we go to the bond transaction. Because of that timeline, should we move forward with this, tonight's meeting would ask to essentially authorize the, the move forward, it's called a move forward resolution. In addition, they would ask you to advertise properly for a potential ordinance in the future. And then, as I mentioned earlier, that reimbursement resolution, that's an option to have flexibility to pay for things in advance of settlement of a transaction. Those are the three items essentially tied to tonight's meeting. Should that move forward, you know, borough, township staff, our firm, outside counsel, and other individuals would begin to work through the process to get us to a point where we would potentially executing a transaction through a public debt issuance. That would include putting together what is called an offering statement, or an OS. That offer, offering statement essentially is the background demographic financial information of the township to give investors the idea of what's going on and to give them a comfort level. We would use that to help you get a credit rating, which is an important part of this process. We wouldn't do that credit rating until after your ordinance was approved. All of those things happening, if all goes well, we would look to price bonds sometime around Halloween, and if that goes as, as necessary, about 30 days thereafter, we would settle on a transaction. So give or take, just after Thanksgiving or early December. So that's kind of moving at a pretty good pace, but given where we stand, what we believe we can do, and just given our expertise here, we, we can get this done in a pretty quick period of time to allow us to lock in rates on or around the time when the Fed may or may not be reducing interest rates. So that's an important point. So I'll stop. Anyone has any questions on kind of process? But a lot's going to happen, but understand, there's more people in suits and things are going to come and help you through this, and, you know, that'll just happen over the next coming weeks.
This is not the first time that we've spoken about this or met, and documents have gone back and forth, and there's a resolution tonight to confirm our discussions with bond counsel. So we are on the road already.
Yes.
This is not the hello on this.
It is not.
Okay.
That is true. We'd be really good if this was the first time.
In, in terms of pricing of the bonds, if we're, we don't get what we think we, we need for pricing, can we unwind the transaction?
We wouldn't go to market. So as part of the process, so the perfect example here would be, when we do the parameters ordinance, we will be asking you to approve these max interest rates, and the number will look like 6%. That's the coupon. More than likely, we will have fours and fives coupons, but the yields will come in less than that. Okay? So we have those parameters in place, and as we're working toward the process, if the market goes in a completely wrong direction between now and then, I will be advising the administration in advance of that. We have to do several steps, one of which is that credit rating, which is very important, that really drives your interest rate. And then secondarily, getting all those other things put together to allow us to do that. In advance of the pricing of the bonds, essentially about a week in advance, we will post the official statement to allow to pre-market. So we'll have some ideas of what the investors are thinking and what they may be interested in. If it still fits within the range we're talking about, then on the day of pricing, we'll have a pretty good idea of where things will go. If while we're pricing the bonds, the world collapses, we can not sign the bond purchase agreement, because it didn't fit. That would be an extreme example of it happening, but we have a significant amount of flexibility until we sign that bond purchase agreement, which is ultimately a document that's authorized by the supervisors and would only be executed if it meets the standards, and our recommendation.
Yeah, I think we're good to go.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I'll sit and wait for a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So. I would suggest, because the next item on the agenda is authorization to advertise the parameters ordinance. If the board would like to discuss which of these options that you're interested in us moving forward with, that would be appropriate, and that way we can handle the parameters ordinance. So Jamie presented three options. Twenty, all three are $10 million in financing. 20-year term, 25-year term, 30-year term. He's recommending, as am I, the 25-year.
I, option two for the 20-
To take the motion first, and then have discussion?
Doesn't matter. We can, we can do it either way.
Yeah, you can do either way, and we don't necessarily need a motion to select.
This is part of my kind of presentation too. If you can tell us which way you're moving direction, watching 25 years.
Yep.
That's fine. The ultimately ordinance is clearly going to be the document that says the term and the maximums, but you want to put the numbers into that.
Correct. So not necessarily into motion right now, but we need at least a consensus on what we should work with on, in the ordinance.
I'm, all four, option two, which is the, the 10 million at 25 years.
I'm in favor of 10 at 25.
Is there anyone who is not in favor of the 10 and 25?
I'm in favor of the 10 and 25, and just, we, our understanding is, this will not require any tax increase for any township resident, so we just want to make that really clear. We are not raising taxes. So, what?
Good catch.
Yes. So, just to be crystal clear. But yes, I'm in favor of 10 at, at 25.
Okay, great.
Sounds like you have your direction.
Yes, and to Danielle's point, no. No new tax increase. This is all, the debt service can be fully paid out of the open space fund, based on the existing revenues, as Jamie mentioned in his presentation.
Great. Thank you. That's where I'm going. Yep. All right then, we'll move forward. I'll make a motion to authorize to advertise ordinance number 2024-05 bond parameters ordinance. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion to ratify letter of engagement with Eckert Siemens for bond counsel services. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Jamie mentioned this briefly in his presentation as well. Eckert Siemens will be retained as our bond counsel to help us through this transaction. We're ratifying the letter of engagement. You're basically just approving, I authorized, bond counsel in order to meet certain deadlines and to keep this process moving. The board is now ratifying that.
We've already met with him. He's very competent, skilled, and he knows his field, and he's essential to the transaction.
Great. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to authorize to advertise for public hearing on September 26th, 2024, at 5:30 PM for acquisition of open space. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The law requires, the open space law requires a public hearing before the, the agreement of sale can actually be signed, be signed.
It'd be signed right after the hearing, if that's your wish. It's a required step.
All right. Any further discussion?
Can we make, can we make it any later?
Oh, later than 5:30.
5:30 is tough. All right. Okay. I will do my best.
Me too. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. I'll make a motion to authorize township manager to take any and all actions necessary to effectuate the open space transaction, including expending funds in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'll second.
I will just explain. This is just simply to allow the transaction to continue moving in between board meetings, when the board can take official action. The board will be kept up to date on any and all actions that I take, but this will just allow us to continue to keep the process rolling and not have to wait a month at a time for board meetings.
There are a lot of moving parts in this, as you can tell.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of October 24, 2024, board supervisor's workshop meeting as a voting meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
This is just simply a failsafe in case we find that we need to vote on something else for this transaction. We then don't have to come back and wait for that. So, just in case we need it as a voting meeting.
Is it? Wow, what a great way to spend it. You're with us.
We're all taking turns with those on.
We've all done that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a, oh, we're down to, we're down to the bottom here. I'll let you pass on.
We could do one of two things. We can go through the rest of the regular business, or if you want to go out of order so that we can complete Jamie's items, we could do the resolutions and open it up to public comment.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
On this topic specifically, while Jamie's still here, and then we can-
We can come back to that.
If you want.
No opposition, I assume. Great. So, we're on the resolutions then. Let's see. All three of the resolutions are pertaining to the open space transaction. And I'll make a motion. We consider adoption of resolution number 2024-16, designating open space. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is a formalization of the requirement to designate under the open space law. It's been done orally, but the resolution formalizes it in a written document.
Simple enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that we consider adoption of resolution 2024-17, reimbursement resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you. This is the reimbursement resolution that Jamie mentioned in his presentation. It allows us to reimburse the open space fund for money expanded prior to the fund issuance.
Any fund.
Any.
So, any, any funds that we expand.
Right, any fund. General fund, open space, whatever we spend from. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion. We consider adoption of resolution 2024-18, move forward resolution. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Great.
The move forward resolution, Jamie explained it. It essentially just allows us to move forward with the transaction. It identifies our entire project team.
If it doesn't lock you into issuing debt, that's what the current ordinance would do. This is just more formalizing saying.
Yeah.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Believe that gets us through the agenda items related to Jamie's presentation and everything with the open space transaction. We will-
Jamie, thank you for everything.
That's, we can, we can, if we want. I'm okay with it.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Public comment on the-
On, on-
On this item with the transaction for open space purchase, not general public comment. We'll get to that later. Is there any public comment related to it? Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Find my way back to where we were. Seven, yeah. Okay, next item is, I'll make a motion for, to accept the 2025 municipal, a minimum municipal obligation, or MMO, for the Skookle Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan and Police Pension Plan in the amounts of $82,448 and $218,378 respectively. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Lori?
Yes, so this is our, exactly what it sounds like, our required municipal contribution to our pension funds. This is based on the calculations done by Jim Kennedy, our pension advisor. So, these figures, and we do this every year, we adopt it this way. These figures are based on the smoothing calculations, so they're, you know, the lesser number, I'll say. The market numbers are higher, so what we traditionally do every year is we adopt the lower amount to allow some flexibility in the budget. If at the end of the year, we have a surplus that we can deposit additional money into the pension fund, then you can make that decision at that time, but this allows us flexibility in the budget and meets our required legal obligations.
Okay, great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Discussion and possible motion to set dates for the 2025 budget meeting. So, I'll pass it to Lori for a sec.
Yeah, so, I'm assuming our budget meeting is going to be our October workshop, but I just opened it up for discussion in the event that anybody wants to consider a different date. We just authorized the advertisement of that meeting as a potential voting meeting, but we may not need it to be. So, traditionally, every year, we do our budget workshop at the October workshop meeting. I think this year, that would be sufficient if that works for everybody.
And that still gives us enough time to advertise and vote on it-
Yep.
-by the end of the year?
Yep.
Okay. That's, I'm fine with that.
No, no issues from me.
So, I don't really need a motion on it.
Okay.
Okay, great, then.
Yeah. It's already a scheduled workshop, so the budget will just be on the agenda.
No additional scheduling. I'll make a motion to authorize road department to commence construction on the pollution reduction plan, including expenditures in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Lori and Paul.
So, the pollution reduction plan, we've been talking about this, I think, all year, well, for the past many years. So, the end is in sight. We're almost done. The work has to be done by the end of the year. So, this has been budgeted already. We're paying for it out of the ARP funds. This is just to give the authorization for the road department to continue doing it. We've had a little bit of trouble getting some materials. There's been some delay, but we'll be done by the end of the year.
DEP is happy with this? Everything's good?
Yes, we had to prepare an amended plan. We actually had to discuss and vote on it, and the DEP did accept it, so that's why we're proceeding ahead with it.
Yay. I can't believe it. This has been years going back and forth with DEP. Thank you for your hard work on this. This is, I, I feel your pain.
We all do. We all do. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve proposal from Arthur A. Swallow in an amount of $17,500 for municipal complex survey. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Bob.
I'll second.
There you go. Thank you.
So, this is part of our municipal complex renovation plan that we're working on. The architect has asked that we complete an updated survey. I think the last time we had this site surveyed was-
When the complex was being built.
Okay, so, long time. We have a conservation easement out back that we need some up, we just need the updated information in order to know exactly where, if they can put the things where they're saying they want to put the things, basically, in very technical architectural terms. So, TNM very kindly got us a couple of quotes. This firm has a good reputation. The prices were all very, very in line with one another. They can get it done the quickest, so it'll keep us moving and keep us on target on our architectural plans.
It was within a couple thousand dollars, but they were the most expensive.
They were the most expensive. Yes, that's correct.
Any percentage why?
Within-
Like, 14 was the cheapest, 16.5 is the middle, and 17-something is the highest.
Yeah. One of the deciding factors is we provided the same information to all three firms, and they all came back with proposals. Then, we came back and basically asked, what's your timeline? We said, if you can get something done by October 11th, which would be about a month from this voting meeting, that would be, you know, consequential in a decision. Two of the firms didn't give an answer. One firm never even gave a schedule. They basically just said, field work can be complicated with weather. Another firm said six to eight weeks, and then the Arthur A. Swallow started with six weeks. And then, when we made that request, he moved it to four weeks. Now, there is an understanding that if we get torrential rains and things like that, that will impact that. But, if we have weather like we have right now, they're ready to get started.
So, I mean, I've worked with a lot of surveyors, and some are great and some are not as great. And I guess I'll go, I will go back, keep going back to the ones that I think are, just perform really well. Is this, does this surveyor have a good reputation, or is this-
Yes, a very good reputation. All three that we reached out to are people that we've worked with in the past. And Arthur A. Swallow is actually a firm that we've tried to work with in the past and with like joint ventures, like if a township needs a survey firm along with an engineering firm. So, I would highly recommend all three. It was just that their schedule really put them above the top.
And Lori, that's important for your purposes, to get it done quickly?
Yes, in order for us to stay on track with the development of our renovation plans. Yeah, we need to get the survey done ideally as quick as possible. We'd hate to have that hold us up at this stage.
All right, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See, I'll make a motion to approve a quote for Civic Plus in an amount of $5,942.83 for annual township website dues. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Pretty simple. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've already done our resolutions and ordinances. Right onto subdivision land development. I'll Valley Forge Railway's preliminary subdivision application for a lot-line change. The applicant seeking the following waivers from subdivision land development ordinance. You'll see those on page four of the agenda, A, B, C, and D.
So, this is an application for preliminary file approval of a land swap situation. Counsel is here with the applicant. It involves a 1.2-acre property that's proposed to be transferred from the McAvoy, the large McAvoy property, to a company called Valley Forge Railway LLC. And counsel is here from the Hamburg Rubin firm to explain this and seek your approval this evening. The planning commission has looked at it and approved it. There are four waiver requests, which I'm sure counsel can go through. And I have prepared a draft resolution of approval and also, in the alternative, an agreement to extend the time. Under the MPC, the decision due date on this application is September 17th. And accordingly, that's why it's before you tonight and has not been pushed off. So, introduce yourself and tell us what you want the board to do.
Hi, everybody. My name is Selsalade. I'm from Hamburg Rubin Mall in Maxwell and Lupin. I'm here tonight on behalf of Valley Forge Railway LTD. As your solicitor mentioned, this is essentially a straightforward lot-line adjustment. You're swapping 1.2 acres of land from one parcel to another. We're here for four separate waivers. One is from section 320-11E, Gisaldo. That would allow us to skip the preliminary plan and just go directly to giving you guys a final plan. A lot of townships have what we call minor subdivision plans or minor lot, minor lot-line adjustments that would allow us to essentially skip going through the usual two-step process. Section 320-18D-24, which would allow us to skip the transport impact analysis, and 320-18D-25, which would allow us to skip the submission of historic impact study. These studies are typically done when you're actually going through a major development or tear-down in development. Again, we're not building anything new. We're just adjusting lines between two separate lots. And then, the other is waiver from section 320-29B, which allows us to use a vertical datum NAVD-88 instead of NAVD-29, which is engineering speak that's a little above my pay grade. We're not proposing any new buildings. Nothing really is going to change. And then, Andy, who, Andy LaRoe, who's with me tonight, is going to walk you through the actual nuts and bolts of the application and sort of explain what exactly it is that we're doing.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can we grab the microphone? Sorry.
That's okay. That's, that's fine.
So, the McAvoy parcel, like, is 162 acres approximately, and the lot one here, red, is about 5.3 acres. And then, the lot-line adjustment's going to be, the overlap here, which is 1.2 acres, will be part of the Valley Forge Railway's parcel. Like Cecil said, you know, there's no, there's no planned improvements. McAvoy actually approached us looking for a, an access easement across our parcel. You know, instead of a monetary contribution, you know, we just negotiated that 1.2-acre land swap, so.
I'm sorry. My brain is tired tonight. I'm not quite following. So, the, I see the McAvoy property, and then the red outline is-
So, the dark, dark blue line here is the McAvoy property.
Okay.
The lot one right now is the red, without this red portion right here. So, where the, where the overlap is, is what's going to be transferred over into lot one.
You already own the lower-
We already own the red part.
Oh, okay. So, in exchange for getting a dedicated easement across the red, they are grant, they are giving you that little overlay area in fee. Okay.
What, may I jump in? I'm sorry. What's going on there now? What's, what's being done on this 1.2 acres right now?
What's currently right there? Yes, every now, it's a zone industrial. This used to be part of the railways. The rail was used to swing around in here. Historically, it's been used for, maybe storage for a little bit, and currently, we have some trailers there with some personal collectibles. That's what I would call them.
Is there a proposal to change the, the use of the property dramatically from what it is now?
Yeah, there's-
So, just to sort of clarify, somebody need the microphone?
Just to clar- Not a problem. Just to clarify, so, going back to the renting company, this property was always used for outdoor railway storage. So, basically, I guess the rail, the rail company would pull rail cars in there and leave them there, would stuff it, as far as we understand it. So, after the renting company, I think it went to consolidate a rail corp before it finally got to us. And as I understand it, it's, is it trailers, or is it actual rail cars that are actually on there? Yeah, so it's essentially the same outdoor storage use that it was previously.
All right, so we're not going to get a new railway line in there between, you know, New York and Washington? Is that correct?
If that happened, I would also be very surprised.
So, Bill, to answer your question, my friend lives on the farm, on the McAvoy property. I've driven past this several times. The guy has been using this property for years, and now, he's just saying, McAvoy approached him and said, hey, we need to have access because we're putting in a new bridge. We need to have this access. If you give me this access, the land of mine that you are already using, you can have it. That's what this is, this is a general, I'm exaggerating a little bit there, but that's pretty much what this is about.
I just have to make sure there are no surprises.
No, absolutely not.
All right.
No.
It's a temporary easement for one year.
Right.
Correct.
Wow. Me too. Me too.
Well, with the, with the new bridge, they won't need it.
But still, you're giving up land in fee. What, so the, the, the current owner, Valley Forge Railways, you said it was, it was a, it was a conra...
So, and I'm just picking off the top of my head here. When I went and looked at the deed history for it, what see, what it looks like happened is we bought it, we being Valley Forge Railway LTD, I think 1990. Prior to that, it was owned by Consolidated Rail Corp., and then prior to that, it was the trustees for the Redding Company, because I guess they went bankrupt, but I'm not entirely sure.
But the Valley Forge Railways, the owner is not a, it's not a real company at all. It's just the name of the entity that owns it.
That is the, I'm sorry, that's the old brown spur that goes in the oats when you're over at BJ's there that railroad urgency along the river. It's the other half of that, so it has nowhere to go on, on, on the cap of that.
All right, so it's not really a land swap. It's a land transfer in exchange for an easement. Is that sort of what...
Yeah, as part of that, we're adjusting the lot lines to do that, yeah.
So it's the board's choice. If you're willing to vote tonight, there's a resolution that I drafted, which identifies the parties, identifies the 1.2 acres, identifies the plan, identifies the engineer. T and M that did a review letter, which is incorporated by reference. Planning Commission approved it. The four waivers are identified. The approval will be subject to certain conditions. All charges, liens, expenses, and bills incurred by the township in connection with this process shall be paid in full before final plans are signed by the township and released. Four waivers are approved. Any future uses or building projects on the 1.2 acre, 1.2 acre transferred parcel site must conform with all township ordinances and codes. So that's available for your consideration. The other option is to think about it and then have them come back for another meeting. We need the extension of time for your decision if you, if you wish to go in that direction.
I'm going to point to Paul, because I did read his letter, and I'm going to ask, what does Paul think of this?
Yes, this is just a, a simple land swap. As you can tell by our last review letter, we didn't have any objections to any of the waiver requests. I think it's a very clear-cut plan. We're not asking for the historical impact. There is, the McAvoy property does have a historical building on it, but there's nothing being proposed for that building or on the property itself. It's just a land swap. So we don't think, we just put that as a, as an informational comment for the supervisors as well as for the applicant. So I have no objection, you know, with this plan.
Thank you.
So you can do one of several things. If the board is willing to grant the waivers and the preliminary final approval of the, of the plan, you can adopt the resolution. So that's Resolution 2024-19. That resolution would encompass the granting of all of the waivers that they've requested that they explained, as well as the preliminary final approval, which is conditioned upon resolving the engineering fees and...
If you agree to do that, the next step would be the signing of the actual plan, delivery to the applicant. That wouldn't be done until all fees are paid. And then they record it and bring it back to us, and then it's a done deal.
Alternatively, and if you have any questions about any of the waivers, you can do them individually. You can do them as a whole. But if you're okay with everything, you can just adopt everything all in, you can approve everything all in one with the adoption of the resolution.
If you're uncomfortable, we would need to ask counsel for a 30-day extension. And I'm sure he would grant it, because if you don't grant extensions, you know what happens, right?
So I'm going to look to the rest of our board, and does anybody feel strongly about, about opposing any of that?
If Paul sees, if Paul sees no issue, I see no issue.
Other side.
I said if Paul sees no issues with it, I'm fine with it.
All right, and I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt Resolution 2024-19. It's, what's the name of it?
Uh, there is no name.
Then, then that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, great.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll send you a copy tomorrow, all right?
Yep.
This is the only one that...
It's the original.
It's precious. It's very precious.
It's the original printout? Yeah. I don't want to lose it. Oh, okay. Did you type it in invisible way so it doesn't exist? That's hot off the presses.
We don't wait to neighbor here.
We don't need the last page.
Not the last page, yeah. You're good.
So that takes care.
I just know if I don't, if I leave it, we'll forget it, and then I'll be calling Mark tomorrow saying, "Oh, I need to come sign."
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are those two items in one. Thank you. Two minute reports. John?
Yes. Sorry, just alt-tabbing over here. So EAC, scrolling down. The board overall was very happy to hear how Jonathan's report was received, the clean energy presentation he did, I guess, a month ago at this point. So lots of good energy there, hoping to push things forward. The DCNR project has been postponed due to funding issues. That's not ours. That's a DCNR problem. So right now, they're aiming for spring of 2025. As that moves, as that moves forward, they'll be keeping Nick, or whomever at that point, abreast of everything that happens. And then there is a tree giveaway this fall, October 26th from 9:00 to 12:00. And if you want to help, October 25th, when all the trees arrive, talk to Karen over there. That's about it, though, as far as major updates go.
Do you know?
So on August 28th, there was a Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission meeting. It was pretty light. We, we did discuss at the meeting, on the July 31st meeting, we had the consistency review for gas station ordinance revisions. That, I mean, that was approved for, that went through the consistency review and was approved. I did mention that we are considering some amendment to the gas station ordinance change to ensure that no, we do not inadvertently allow gas stations to be built closer to a residential structure that happens to be within a commercial district. Lori and I have discussed, and I mentioned on that, that PRPC meeting, we don't think that the changes will be significant enough to require that to go through another consistency review with the PRPC. Otherwise, there was a consistency review for some amendments to the, uh, Phoenixville ordinance that, for their subdivision land development ordinance amendment. They, Phoenixville had removed some of the requirements for, for impact statements regarding community facilities and transportation. And so the, the decision from the PRPC was to require that, or advised that it should be revised for consistency with the, the transportation plan. So, you know, it's going to come back, but it seemed as though they were revising their subdivision land use ordinances in a way that took a tool out of their toolbox in order to, in what they could use to evaluate new developments, so. Otherwise, it was a light agenda.
Thank you. Bob?
Everything going well with open space, multiple efforts with outreach, and good potential for transactions in the future. Other than that, everything's good.
Thanks. I didn't have a planning commission meeting last month. We canceled nothing on the agenda. I did go to the fire company's 75th anniversary. Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. It loads kind of rock in there, so, thank you. Good to see, it was good to see a crowd. Martha?
Okay, so the historical commission, they had on their agenda, they're talking about the, and I can't, I'm not going to say it. I'm just going to say the 250th anniversary of our country. Yes, thank you. They have an idea that they are looking at for our township. I am just going to give you guys an update at like 30,000 feet, because I don't want to dig into the mud at a township meeting, at a public meeting at the moment. What they're looking into is like getting some sort of a trolley and doing a drive-through, a drive around the township and talk about some historical sites and have somebody on there, you know, talking to the public about them. The reason why I don't want to say where they're going to go is because some of these places are privately owned homes, and they haven't spoken to them yet. So I don't want to discuss that part of it. On Thursday, I'm sorry, give me a second here. I have, yes, tomorrow?
The 12th.
The 12th. Is that on you? Are you going to do announcements?
No.
No? Okay.
I haven't been given any.
At the Phoenixville Country Club. I apologize. I'm trying to, Jim McKinley will be giving a discussion on Dupertail, the engineer of the revolution. He will uncover the fascinating story of Dupertail's contributions, including the founding of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And he's a hero of the American Revolution.
What time is that?
This is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Phoenixville Country Club, and our historical commission is sponsoring this guy. But I know. Everybody pronounces it differently. It's Dupertai, Dupertail, whatever, however you want to pronounce it. I have no clue.
I was waiting for you.
I'm sorry.
And now, how do you pronounce it?
Dupertai.
Dupertai, okay. Since I, since I was this big, we've always pronounced it Dupertail, okay? I'm from Philly. What did I say? I'm not from France. I'm from Philly. Seven o'clock, tomorrow night. And my apologies for not making it to your anniversary. I was out of town. Okay. That's it. That's all I have.
How am I supposed to follow that? But, okay, I will try. Just very briefly, I don't have much other than all of the other things that were on the agenda tonight, but I did just get an invitation from PennDOT for a pre-construction meeting, because, you know, as our luck would have it, they are planning to start construction on the Valley Park Bridge over Anderson Brook. I have known that that was coming, but, you know, they don't often give us...
Oh, that's the one that's had the restrictions.
That's the one that's had the restrictions?
Right over here.
Yes, 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 correct. So that is at the end of this month, so I'll have more information after that. According to their website, they're planning to start construction in September. Probably makes sense based on them.
The one on Anderson, right by your neighborhood, the one that's on...
Do you know why the county was at Creek Road Bridge this week?
They're going to just replace the bridge, I think.
Are they widening that bridge, or just...
I don't know. At this point, um...
When you have designs, pass them along.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything.
And that's starting when?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I will learn that.
Are they bringing the same crew that they used for the White Horse Road Bridge? Okay.
Or it would take three months?
Two sides don't match. That bridge, they just did a white horse. The two sides don't match.
Yes, I have noticed that.
Yeah.
Yes, despite, despite, despite the length of time that the Sistine Chapel workers took to rebuild it.
Let's go with Chief.
I will clarify, the White Horse Bridge was conducted by their maintenance crew, not by a contracted contractor, because PennDOT did not want to pay the bill to have it done that way. That's, that was why. Because apparently this is their high season for construction. All the big companies want to make all the big money out of 422 and all the major highways. So they would have costed out that repair at a very high level. So I kind of wrote, wrote hurt on them for a little bit, because they kept getting called away for other maintenance projects around the county, because they weren't dedicated to this job. But they did finally settle down and get it done after much discussion. I'll put it politely. You have the usual monthly report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'll answer that. The other thing I have is that our new part-time officer, Robert Wilson, has just successfully completed his FDO program, and he will be ready to work assigned shifts as we need him. Very happy to have him. Very mature individual, and I think he'll be a great addition.
All right, cool.
Great.
Anything else? Anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. Paul?
Thank you. Not much of a report. We're obviously working on the PRP plan and the coordination with Nick to get the, the materials together, as well as to just get everything mapped out. And the other item is that the, the annual MS4 report is due at the end of September, so we're working on that for the township.
It's our favorite time of the year.
All right, thanks. Discussion on agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings. Let's pass it to Lori for a sec. We can start with the fire department first, though, if you'd like to... If you've got anything.
Thank you again for coming out. Thank you, Paul, and T and M for helping support that. You have our report, and just a general reminder that October 14th, second Monday, is our open house fire prevention stop on out. It's a good time. You can learn something, do a couple different new things. Any questions for us? No? Thank you.
Sorry, Mark. I realize that jumped over our workshop. The workshop meeting will be, October will be budget, and September will be public hearing. That's when we have a, we don't have a whole...
God, who's busy for that?
Yeah. The end of the year, and we don't usually have a workshop in...
December.
December. Yeah.
Does the November one land on Thanksgiving?
Um, it would be the week before. Yeah.
Thanksgiving's late this year.
Is it? I don't know until it's November, so. It'll show. Okay, well, then...
Yeah.
Any more announcements from anybody?
So the only other announcement, you're going to have to remind me of our date, but we are working on a movie night.
Yes, we are.
That the fire department is graciously offering to bring a truck to.
It's a distraction from the movie, don't you think?
Friday, October 18th. The brand date of the 19th. Movie, TV, out here?
Halloween themed.
Halloween themed, choice TV, cost dependent.
I'll spread it around the neighborhood.
It's in the newsletter. Newsletter hasn't gone out yet, but it's in the newsletter. We have a website. We're self-finalizing details, but we will be volunteers, so we will take anybody who wants to help us.
Okay. Cool.
So we are, oh. It's not really an announcement, but Lori and I are going to be talking to HelpSee sometime tomorrow to set up a textile recycling event sometime soon.
More to come.
More to come. That's it.
All right, any public comment? I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.